...home news Tribune, the Asbury Park Press, the Board Office, the schools and on Cablevision, Channel 118 and Verizon Viros, Channel 24, and by filing such notice with the Township Clerk. This meeting was scheduled for Tuesday, September 17th, 2019. The Board will take formal action on payment of bills and other agenda items. Mr. Mara, please.
The Olbridge Township Board of Education acknowledges that the law of this state establishes that members of the public, including members of the Board, have the right to record public Board meetings using audio or video recording devices, provided that that act of recording does not interfere with the business of this public Board meeting. Therefore, the Board makes it known that any such recordings be considered a private recording of the individual and in no manner represents the official record of this Board. The Board therefore takes no responsibility for such private recording and completely disavows any future use.
Thank you, Mr. Mara. Roll call, please.
DeCaro?
Here.
DePrima?
Here.
Dunn?
Here.
Ellis Foster?
Here.
Lent?
Here.
Reed? Singh? Solakowski?
Yeah.
Callie?
Here.
Quaram exists.
Thank you. Can we please rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands.
Thank you. Is this working? It's not working. Okay, microphone or not, I just want to welcome everybody to a brand-new school year. Thank you for coming out tonight. Our volunteer to read, oh, there we are, Code of Ethics Corner, I believe, is Mr. DePrima.
The Board member will refuse to surrender his/her independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups, or to use the schools for personal gain or for the gain of friends.
Thank you, Mr. DePrima. I need a motion, please, to approve the addendum to the agenda. I'll move it. Thank you. Second, please.
Legal second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
DeCaro? Prima? Dunn? Ellis Foster? Lent?
Yes.
Reed? Singh? Solakowski?
Yes.
Callie? Motion to approve the addendum.
I'll move it. I'll second, DeCaro.
DeCaro?
Yes.
Prima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Lent?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Callie?
Yes.
Resolution one passes.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to the report of the student representative to the Board, and I would like to welcome Dominic Rosiak.
How are you? So, as most of you may know, yesterday was a senior dinner cruise, and tomorrow begins Project Post where students will write positive, hopeful messages that will be put on lockers over the week of the 23rd through the 27th in honor of Sarah Aziz. The 21st through the 23rd is a peer retreat. On the 25th, all the papers for Project Post will be put on lockers. On the 26th, by door eight, there will be a concert in the morning performed by our staff choir and talented musicians at Olbridge High School. The 27th will be Orange Hour at Olbridge High School. Cosmetology students will sponsor a fundraiser in the cafeteria with proceeds to SAD. Senior assembly at the end of the day, home opener tailgate at the party field before the football game. And we have a few things planned in October. October 4th will be Pink Out. The OBHS Club Fair will be October 8th through 11th. Homecoming, this year the theme will be A Night Under the Stars is planned to be October 17th. Our alumni celebration fall into OBHS will be the week of the 28th, and voter registration sponsored by the Boy Scout team.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to recognition. Mr. Cittadino?
Thank you, Ms. Callie. At this time, we're going to recognize another wonderful Eagle Scout from our community. So at this time, I'd like to ask the principal of Carpenter School, Mr. McQ, to go to the dais with our vice president of the Board, Ms. Kelly Ellis Foster. Move the Board of Education to recognize Kevin Gallagher, 10th grader at Olbridge High School, for completing his Eagle Scout project at Carpenter Elementary School. Kevin completed the landscape beautification project for the front entrance of Carpenter Elementary School. He arranged for the supplies and donations and provided all the labor for this project. Mr. McQ, take it away.
Board of Education members, Mr. Cittadino, tonight we'd like to recognize Kevin Gallagher, an Olbridge High School sophomore, for his Eagle Scout project at Carpenter Elementary School. Kevin decided that he was going to do his project to enhance the front of our school, exactly where the visitors park. It's an area that, for the last couple of years, I've wanted to add some nice features to, and when I met with Kevin originally about his project, we figured that would be the best spot for him to do that. Kevin had two parts to his project. The first part was he wanted to create a sitting area around the flagpole. It turned out absolutely wonderful, a beautiful project. He had pavers that he outlined a walkway that went around the flagpole. He created a sitting area with two benches there, and outlining the benches was the border of wood, bordering the outside of the benches with mulch in there so that people can sit by the flag and reflect. He also wanted to create an area for our staff. He created an area where they could go out and have their lunch and just to take a break, recharge the batteries to come back in there to teach. There was two picnic tables set outside, and there was an area where we had a tree, and he made a 20-by-20-foot section. He made it out of wood, about two foot high, of railroad ties, and inside there he planted flowers and bushes there to make that area look really nice. Everybody that comes to Carpenter School comments on how wonderful it looks, how nice it looks. There's two things that stuck out to me that day when I was there helping and assisting. The first one is that it was great to see so many of our members of our community coming together to help and assist. Not only were there members of his troop there, there were his former teachers there, as well as neighbors, and people just coming together to help with that project. The second thing that stood out that day was just seeing the leaders over there work with the troop members, just showing them how to cut the pavers to make them go into the little squares and fit into the holes, just showing them how to use the tools and the materials there, and they truly are a special group of gentlemen over there that work with Troop 129. I want to thank Kevin and his whole family for choosing Carpenter for his Eagle Scout project. I want to thank the leaders and the troop members of 129, and I want to congratulate Kevin, who on Sunday had a ceremony to officially become an Eagle Scout. So congratulations, Kevin, and thank you. We're going to come up front and take a picture. Yeah, the troop, do they want to come, are we going up front?
Thank you, Kevin Gallagher, and all of the troop members at Troop 129. Our next? Oh, I know. Do you want to, sure, that'd be great. Thank you again, Scouts. We have a, for the past, I don't know, six, seven years, we've been having a lot of programs with the Scouts, re-beautification projects at our schools, through the Eagle Scout Ceremony. I know Mr. Brown is here. He reaches out to me quite often, and I relay that information to our principals, say, what do we need? What do we need at your schools? And then we take the phrase, what can Brown do for you? And we convert it to, what can Brown and the Boy Scouts do for you? And we get something done. So, thank you very much for all your dedication to our community and our schools.
Can I ask one question regarding the Scouts? We seem to have a lot of young men who are doing all these beautification projects. Can we see pictures going forward? I'd like to see their work.
You got it. Move the Board of Education to recognize Special Education Group, our SEPTA group. So if I can have it this time, our Board President, Ms. Callie, go to the dais, and I'm sure you're going to have Ms. Allison go with you. Allison Boss, Diane Michael, Kim Ventola, and Scott Endress, please join her. So move the Board of Education to recognize Olbridge Special Education Parents and Teachers Association, SEPTA, for their unwavering support of education, children, and families. The SEPTA Rocks Campaign, that is championed by this parent, paraprofessional, and teacher members of the organization, is a simple yet beautiful way to improve quality of life for many members of our community. SEPTA's generosity to our schools with their flexible seating initiative demonstrates the organization's philanthropic and scholastic value to Olbridge Township Public School District. Thank you again.
There you go. Takes an IT guy to figure this out. Okay. If there's anybody in the audience that is not aware of the hashtag SEPTA Rocks Initiative, I discovered this on social media and then through Allison over the summer. They are taking their own time and their own funds. This is not a fundraiser, and they are painting these wonderful little rocks, and they're spreading them all over town. I've had people reach out to me who don't live in town, you know, what do I do with this? So, and this one in particular, I loved. Kindness is a gift we can all afford to give, and I reached out to Mr. Cittadino, and I thought that it was very appropriate tonight to honor SEPTA and their work on SEPTA Rocks. I know, I've seen pictures on social media of children finding them and the parents saying it's made their day, staff finding them, and it just brightens everybody's day. And to take that initiative on, I know it was a lot of work because I just keep seeing more and more pictures of tables full of rocks. I want to know where you're getting all of these rocks. But, in any event, we wanted to present you with this certificate, and thank you for doing what you do to make Olbridge a better place. Thank you, Joe. Every minute? Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Thank you for tonight. Everybody, thank you. Just a little bit about the SEPTA Rocks Initiative. I just have a little something to read. First, I do want to say thank you to my wonderful Board. Kimmy, Diane, Scott, painting rocks, delivering rocks, coming up with sayings for the rocks, just, it was, they were amazing. So, thank you, guys, so much for everything. So, SEPTA Rocks is intended to bring our community together. This project was on our list for years, and then last year, with all the hardships the district was facing, it seemed the best time and platform to start our very own rock project, to encourage kindness, build unity, and spread awareness for special education right here in Olbridge. Our Board, along with our children, sat up, sat as a group on a Saturday afternoon and became immersed in painting and throwing inspirational words, sayings, and pictures around. Before we knew it, there were other groups having SEPTA Rock painting parties, and soon after, we were able to see the difference it was making and the connections that were being formed throughout the town. We are pleased to be registered with the Kindness Rocks Project and couldn't be prouder to continue the work of Founder Megan Murphy, who inspired us with this quote. I'm just going to read the quote really quick. "We are more alike than different, and when we begin focusing our attention on what unites us rather than on what divides us, we build greater connections and great progress is made." So, I think that's amazing, too. "These rocks are great tools for our kids. Conversation starters, what it means to be kind, and how many ways we can be kind. We encourage everyone to keep the rocks, pass them along, or place them in the numerous painted rock gardens at the schools in Olbridge, or use them as an inspirational paperweight, like Dr. Tuohy does in his office." So, that was perfect because he has one as a paperweight. So, we plan to continue kindness projects as the school year continues, so keep following us. Thank you, everybody. Just one more thing, I do want to thank, one more person, Jeff Michael, Diane's husband, who we would not have been able to do any of this. He got donations from landscapers for rocks, so I just want to thank him because he was a great part of this as well. And that's it. Thank you.
So, as your Board, we have no rocks to give out tonight, but we've given out many, but the only rock we want to give out tonight is one to Allison, because we wouldn't be here without her. And this is just, yeah.
Make me cry. Picture? Yeah, we'll do a picture. Oh, my rock. Take your own. Okay, may I have a motion, please, to move recognition, items one and two. DeCaro, move. Thank you, Mrs. DeCaro. Second.
Gunnell, second.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Discussion.
I'd just like to say, you know, recognition is just my favorite part of the entire meeting, and it's just, it really highlights, you know, the great things that we are in Olbridge and we're doing. And it's great to see the Scouts doing all the beautification projects that they do for our schools. And SEPTA, you guys, you guys are great. Allison, you rock. I've known Allison for years, and she's just, always goes above and beyond, and she's got a great team working with her, and you guys are great. It's really, you rock. Thank you.
So, I know this is going to sound somewhat redundant, too, but, you know, I also wanted to comment, I know Dominic just had to leave, but the tone that is being set already from the high school and from the students, and I know a lot of those initiatives are student-led, is just, the positivity is just, it warms my heart. And I want to say to the Scouts, I was talking to the Scoutmaster, I am wearing my Eagle Mom pin, so I know what it takes to do that. I have to say how impressed I am that you're a sophomore and you've already gotten your Eagle Scout. I mean, that is a tremendous accomplishment. My son was a junior, which was lucky to do that, and I can't tell you the number of Scouts I've known through the years that it's like, a few more weeks till you're 18, you've got to get that in. And the amount of work that goes into it, and the planning, and with the community and your parents. So, congratulations. And then finally, SEPTA, you know, it's, it makes you stop and think for a few minutes, which is amazing, about those rocks. The tone out in general can be so divisive. It's disheartening to turn on Facebook. I try not to because it just is draining. But these rocks, again, how you came up with some of those phrases are fabulous. They're just joyful, and thank you for setting this tone, and thank you for reminding me how lucky we are. Thank you.
Anybody else? No? We're good? Okay. So, from the Department of Redundancy, congratulations. I had two daughters that were in Scouts. They didn't get it nearly as far as you did. I know how much work it was. I was a scout leader myself for a short period of time, and the work that you boys are doing to beautify our schools is amazing, and I just want to congratulate you once again. And SEPTA, Allison, and the rest of you guys, I don't even know what to say. When I gave the graduation addresses to the, last year's graduating classes of the middle schools, I focused on kindness. So, when I saw your initiative on Facebook, I was just like, wow, because I just, you know, always, always, always choose kindness. Any of you who were at those speeches, that's a little redundant for me, too. But, and I know that there's some other initiatives. I know that Ms. Michael reached out to me yesterday. Haven't forgotten. Okay. But, congratulations. It's well-deserved, and thank you for spreading kindness and a little joy throughout the district at a time where we really need it. Okay, if there's no other discussion, roll call, please.
DePrima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Absolutely, yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Lent?
Yes.
Reed?
Definitely.
Singh?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
DeCaro?
Yes.
Callie?
Absolutely.
Resolution one and two, pass.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. First, under the superintendent's report, I'd like to report to the Board and to the public. We had a wonderful start to the school year. This was seamless as far as many areas. First of all, starting with transportation, the work that is done in that department is remarkable and amazing to cover our 42-plus square miles with our transportation fleets and get 8,600 students home safely to their parents every day, and to start off the year is quite amazing. Our maintenance staff had our buildings looking terrific this year and safe as they opened up. Everyone from our leadership to, on our teachers, had welcoming environments, our paraprofessionals, secretaries. It was just a great kickoff to the school year, a lot of positivity, and I want to thank everyone who made that possible for doing so. Brings us to these, this night with the football jerseys as a kickoff to the football season in the NFL, and locally here at our high school, we won the Battle of Ruta Team, which is a new tradition, starting in on the first week of the football, high school football season. We'll be playing East Brunswick. And brings me to this unfortunate tight shirt that I have on today. But there's a reason for it. It's not, I'm not wearing it because I wanted to wear this shirt and show how tight it fits me. I wanted to wear it because each number means something. Dr. Hope over there is wearing the number 15. We were recognized by niche.com as, and NJ.com as the 15th-best school district if you had an athlete attending schools, so I wanted to recognize that number. Mr. Mara is wearing number 54. That was recognized as the 54-best school district in the state of New Jersey. It's 377 school districts. To be number 54 is quite successful. We weren't even in the top 100 as far as a school district a few years back, so to be in number 54 is quite amazing, and as due to everyone's involvement. And I'm wearing five because we were selected as the top-five school district in the county of Middlesex. So, I think that's a wonderful testament to the work that's being done with our families, our students, our educators, all around. And, you know, like I said before, that is no small feat when you look at some of the small K-8 districts that are in that top-five in Middlesex. To be a large district in Middlesex County with 8,600 students and to be in the top-five really says a lot, especially when you start looking down, breaking bound by the DFGs, the socioeconomics, and everything, the challenge facing our communities. To be in the top-five, great job by everyone in Olbridge School District. Just an update as where we're going now with some of our initiatives. Tomorrow, the U.S. Secret Service will be here with our administrative training team to, the, the U.S. Secret Service has written the best book on crisis management planning for school districts in light of all of the negative and social events that have happened in schools across the country. And when the opportunity came for them to come train us, I said, that's what we have to have done. If they've written the book that the state police are using, the FBI is using, then I want to have the Secret Service here. So, they'll be training with our administrative team tomorrow, identifying some of the best practices that we can use to keep our staff and our students safe here while in our schools. Today, we had Lifeline Training, which gives our counselors, our CST members, our social workers, our administrators, some tools and training that's mandatory for suicide prevention. Mental health, mental illness is something that really has taken its mark on our nation, and we wanted to make sure that we were the forefront of that training to have a valuable toolkit for every school leader and every social work provider within our schools. Also, this week, we did a reunification walkthrough for the Olbridge Police Department. We have the best partnership with Olbridge Police Department. I'd say to any police department and their school districts in the state of New Jersey. We did walkthroughs, we did planning, tabletop planning, looking at, you know, what are some of the challenges we're going to face if we have to ever do a reunification. For those of you who don't know what a reunification is, if there's a tragic event in a school, you have to then transport those students to another school. We learned at Sandy Hook that without a reunification plan, it causes greater distress for the students and the parents post-event than sometimes the event itself. So, you have to have a plan in place to get those students safely to their families. So, we are working on a plan that best fits Olbridge and our large community and all of our schools, and we did a walkthrough with the Olbridge Police Department, and that'll continue all through this month. We have a plan that best fits us laid out. I do want to give a shout-out to Dr. Tuohy. He doesn't know I'm going to do this, but he's here tonight. He's doing a great job. You know, it's, the, the report I'm going to do next under Progress Towards Goals, it really comes out of technology. It's one of the hats we've had to collapse in a department to take on administratively. had to collapse in a department to take on administratively and I will be giving the report on that as part of the superintendent's goals. But Dr. Tuohy taking over both executive director positions, so we had an executive director of academics, we had a direct, executive director of special services, when we only have one executive director position left because of fiscal impact, he's done a great job not just maintaining programs, but advancing the programs and bringing things that we've desperately needed and bringing them quickly, so very, very much great thanks to Dr. Tuohy and his leadership. I'm now going to convert over to just the Progress Towards Goals, one of our, on our district goals is to provide meaningful and effective programs for our students and that wouldn't be possible in the twenty-first century without technology. First, we must recognize our future-ready schools that were acknowledged this week. McDivitt School and Miller School both received bronze-level future-ready status from the state of New Jersey and Memorial School received their silver status. And I'd want to clear up for you that, cuz I, a lot of people who I've talked to, even myself, when I first started learning about this process, it's not like the Olympics where you get a bronze medal, you came in third place. Bronze is the first step when you get future-ready status, so you can't go right to silver and say you came in the second. You start off with bronze, it's a three-year certification process, and then you apply and you've maintained that bronze, you can get the silver as the next step. So Memorial brought in the bronze last year, they could've just said, hey, we're gonna sit on bronze for a little bit, three years until we have to reapply again and try for silver, they weren't happy with the bronze, they wanted more, they applied for the silver and got the silver status. Entry level, McDivitt and Miller highly recognized for their work as a future-ready New Jersey school district and they, they received bronze. On our district banner at the bottom, it says that we are future-ready school district by the nation. It's one of those things that's kind of backwards, that it's actually easier to get future-ready status from the nation than it is from the state. From the nation, you kind of have to demonstrate the ability to have a commitment towards it. For the, for the, the state, it requires a lot of documentation and data to prove it, so it's kind of like we became Miss America before we became Miss New Jersey, but either way, we're future-ready all the way and committed to it. In line with that, I also wanted to share, I have to go to my other list on my phone, to, we have a lot of Microsoft expert educators within the community, currently we have seven, the state only has fifteen, meaning that we have seven of the fifteen in the state reside here in Olbridge, New Jersey. That'd be Chris Barica, Kristen DeGlorio, Andrew Lewis, Linda Naspo, Scott Titmus, Rory Yakubov, and James Janizelli. So they should be recognized because, one, it's only seven out of fifteen and they're, they're here in Olbridge, New Jersey. So I want to go over some of the projects that took place this past summer to get us ready for this school district and beyond. We had a network switch upgrade at Salk, Carlson and Burke Middle School, Cooper School, and Carpenter School. We switched over from Juniper switches to Cisco switches and our plan is to do like we've done with some of the iPads in the past and laptops from the past and switches from the past. We're gonna help, hopefully sell them and get some revenue for them to use for future technology needs. We did server upgrades, we're running three new servers that are desperately needed for the district, each of them containing fourteen terabytes of memory. We're looking at a new print management system and I'm gonna give you an example of why it's necessary, especially as we look at, you know, the fiscal needs, just being green and just being environmentally conscious. If we did a case study on one printer from somewhere in the district, I'm not gonna say where, this one printer, it's a local printer, printed seventeen thousand copies in one year, seventeen thousand pieces of paper in one year on that printer. If it went to an, an MFP printer, which is sometimes, you know, what we consider also a copier and so forth, the tremendous, there's a tremendous difference, and here's the details of that. So seventeen thousand sheets of paper to the local printer cost six hundred and eighty dollars. It actually costs more than the printer itself for that one year. The prints, that's four cents, four cents a sheet of paper. If you did it to an MFP or a copy machine, it's half a cent per sheet, so that same amount of seventeen thousand sheets of paper only cost the district eighty-four dollars. Now take that number and multiply it by the seven-hundred-and-thirty-five local copiers, local printers we have in the district. Just, if, if we, if I took that number and I just gave a low-ball estimate on each, each printer, it could be over two-hundred-thousand dollars just in print paper alone coming, just from the local printers. So, and I, I think that's a low-ball estimate, so we're looking to cut those costs, it'll save printers and, and hopefully provide some more convenience for our professionals using them. We are looking right now to deploy another six-hundred HP streams and we're not just going to take the streams that we had, we are repurposing those streams that we had, so at a Cooper School, which was the first school to get the HP streams in the beginning, we'll take those five-year-old HP streams and then put them back, refurbish them and put them back in different areas in the, in the, in the district and bring the new HP streams back for the grades three through five in Cooper School and middle schools and high school. And the other ones will be refurbished and go to different areas and classrooms. I'm happy to say our Microsoft 365 Teams platform is up and running for grades three through twelve. I think that rounds up the report for today. If any questions for the board, I'm here to answer them.
Does anybody have any question?
Mrs. Duprema? Yes, this is a large, as you were asking, if you're wondering, this shirt. Can I have, can I have one of your bottles of water, you're not drinking any, Mrs. Duprema?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cittadino. Do we have any correspondence?
No correspondence.
No, okay. I don't believe we have any special committee reports, but I do believe we have committee meetings that maybe we can share.
Okay, we have, on October third, the first curriculum meeting and on October tenth, which hasn't been published yet, but it will be, the first policy meeting of the year.
Thank you.
The third and the tenth.
Thank you. But, we're combining the curriculum and?
Right, yeah, the technology will follow after curriculum on the third.
Okay.
And we have the chair for technology here also.
Thank you. Okay, you have facilities uses in your packets. Okay, I'm gonna open up the floor to hearing of residents on agenda items only. Mr. Weber?
That's thirty-seven, right?
Yeah, it's eight-ish.
Ish.
Okay. Hi, Frank Weber, I'm an Olbridge resident for forty-six years, I live at Ninety-Six Athens Avenue. I have a question about, under item twenty-eight, Board Secretary and Board Business, item number two, second paragraph about going, offering for sale the property at Nike Bay to twenty-five-plus acres. How is the ten-million-dollar bid, offer price really, how was that evolved? Did we get a commercial appraisal?
Mr. Weber, there was an appraisal, there's also, the appraisal did not take into account necessarily the market analysis, it was more of a pure land appraisal. So this, this number was arrived at by the board and executive session in consultation with the administration to try and maximize the public benefit from this property.
All right, can we share the value of the commercial appraisal you did get?
Nope.
Okay. If it's operable, I'll ask for it. In any event, should it sell for the ten, ten million dollars, that'll be a wonderful windfall to dig us out of the financial dire straits we're in, but it will only cover four years, maybe four and a half years, and we'll still have a shortage going forward. So it, we need to move forward on that project as well as the Cheesequake project.
Mr. O'Neal?
Hi, I wanted to address under Supplies, Equipment and Services, item number one, I believe this is what Mr. Cittadino was just talking about, the Printer Management Service. The information on this item says that we're going to be paying a company a little over two-thousand dollars a month for five years in order to put this management in place, is that the same thing that Mr. Cittadino was just talking about?
Yes, it is.
Okay, if everyone is now going to be printing through the copy machines that we use, will there be more copiers? I ask because the machines that we have now have a tough time keeping up with the volume that they see. In the high school, we actually have four of them, all in one location, and pretty much every day so far this year, at least two of them have been down. And from talking to the repairmen who are regularly there, they say that a lot of it is because of the volume that we, that we go through already. Thank you.
All good questions, Mr. O'Neal, and, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna pilot first at our building to make sure that we understand it first before we push it there, some of the benefits to what you're, you're saying. So it's not gonna say everybody's gonna print everything to the MFPs, but it'll recognize what it, and like it doesn't recognize now, the difference between someone printing one piece of paper, two pieces of paper, or seventy-five pieces of paper. So if it sees, if it recognizes a volume print, it will redirect to the MFP and not, not to the local. What it'll also do is it'll give you a follow-me queue. It doesn't mean that if that's not working, the local one's not working, where you're, where you're at and you're happy, you're lucky, you'd like to go to, it'll stay in the cloud for you to whenever you get, to get to it, and if you get to another one, it can be anywhere in the district, and you put your information in, your, all your prints will be, become available to you and you can print them there. So if you're, let's say you're leaving on a Friday, but you don't need it till Monday and the machine's down that you'd like to go to, the closest one to you, you don't have to worry that it's gonna, someone's gonna fix the paper, someone's gonna fix the toner, and then all yours are gonna come spilling out and someone's gonna say, well, these aren't mine, and put them in the paper, put them there. Or what happens, a lot of times, teachers don't see it, staff members don't see it, we don't see it, we print, 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 and then we get five copies of the same thing that we, we didn't need. So only, we'll recognize the one and wherever that, the item is clear, it will only, you'll only have to worry about printing when a MFP is clear.
So just after everything that we all went through last year, I figured maybe you guys might be interested in how our students are doing at the four schools they were dispersed to. After talking to many parents overall, most of our kids are doing fine, the schools have been very welcoming to them. Like you said, students are resilient and unfortunately, because they had to test their resiliency, most of them are doing okay. However, kids that are not are arranged from meltdowns at home to refusing to go to school to having teachers and principals basically pull them into the school. But, you know, that's, I guess, to be expected, so that's, that's fine, but most of all, overall, parents are settling in and the students are settling in. Just from the experience that we had, we wanted to offer a few suggestions that if you have to do this process again, that you allow the teachers and principals to be able to talk with the students a little more openly and honestly about the situation, instead of just having them say, it'll be a new adventure, it'll be great, you guys will be great, you'll be great. Our guidance counselor basically told us that they weren't allowed to say anything, they kind of had to smile and keep going. We think it really would've benefited our kids if the principal, if the teachers could've sat down on the floor with the kids and said, you know what, this stinks, I'm mad, are you mad? I'm sad, are you sad? Let's be sad together and then let's figure out how we're gonna go forward. And they weren't allowed to do that, and I think that would've benefit, benefited a lot of the students and honestly, I think it would've benefited the teachers to be able to sit down with their kids, maybe cry a little bit and be like, you know what, I don't wanna go either, but let's figure out how we can move forward. So that's just a suggestion. Our kids never really had a chance to grieve over the loss of their school, it was kind of all jammed in there, the last two weeks, they got thrown into the four schools. We, the teachers, the PTA threw them a killer glow party, sent them off, it was great. In September, it didn't really hit them, that holy cow, I'm on my regular bus with my regular kids, but I'm going to a new school. And so a lot of them, now they're grieving, now they're going through the period of, oh my gosh, where's this teacher, where's this, you know, where's my friends? So maybe if you have to go through this process again, you start the process of this sooner. I, I'm pretty sure you made the decision to close Cheesequake not in the last two to three weeks, I'm sure it was two to three months out. At that point, call a spade a spade and say, listen, we have to do this to your school, let's see what we can do moving forward. I think that would be beneficial to the teachers, to the parents, to us. The other concern is that, once you've closed a school, I, we're worried that you kind of feel like we're done with the process, the process is over, you can put it behind you, you know, phew, and if you don't have to mention it again, if it doesn't have to be asked how the students are doing, how the parents are doing, then you don't have to deal with any conflict. And it kind of feels like slowly we want to erase everything. Somebody from the district, we were told, came and took down our shirt at Dunkin' Donuts, where all the shirts are. That's kind of depressing to anybody who ever graduated from Cheesequake, they came, they took it down, and now it's not there, right? So, we're working to put another one back up there, so whoever from the district did that, too bad, it's going back. So many parents kind of forgotten that now that it's September, there was no follow-up email from, from Mr. Cittadino or Dr. Hoek or the board reaching out to say, hey, you know, I know this is tough, how you doing, if you need anything, reach out to us. It's kind of like, June ended, we closed you, you're in four different schools, good luck, we know you'll be great, see you later. So that's just some suggestions, God forbid if you have to go through this process again. And have you reached out to the teachers, do you know how they're doing? And that would be another thing, is, we're concerned with our kids and parents, but we are also very concerned with our thirteen grade-level teachers and the thirty-three entire staff members that were at Cheesequake, so has that been done? Are you able to reach out to the teachers? Have you touched base with them just to get a read on, are they settling in? I mean, we're concerned, I mean, you know, this, this was our family, we just want to make sure that, you know.
I will say that I, I myself, Dr. Hoek, have been in every school, stopped in every classroom, did I say to them, you know, are you doing okay at this moment? No, I said, how are you? How is the, how is the beginning of the year?
Okay.
How are those things? But within three days, we covered every school in the district, stopped in every classroom.
Okay.
If this teacher was there, sometimes they're on a prep or something like that.
Right.
But yes, and I, and, you know, some of the things, I understand your pain, I respectfully disagree with a lot of what you said, to say that we knew and we just, we just waited, you were there, you were part of the process, you know we're waiting for state approval.
Okay.
So to say that, we just said, we're gonna wait until the last three weeks to tell everyone, it was very clear, we're waiting for state approval. If the state said no, because you were calling people from the state, asking them not to close, that allows closed school, and through the whole campaign to tell people not to have us close school, if the state said no, and then we just told all the kids that you're leaving, you're moving, but now you're not, you would've said to us, how dare you put my child in that situation? How dare you tell my child he's moving and get him ready to go to the school, and then you rank it back and put him back there?
Correct. I'm saying, the next time, the next time, if this happens again, if there is a better way, instead of kind of jamming everything in two to three weeks, if there's a way to slowly get them prepared, that would have been helpful, instead of not letting anybody say anything about anything, just kind of mentally preparing. Because I, I feel like the writing was pretty much on the wall, that it was gonna go through, once it hit through the county, I think it was pretty much writing was on the wall, it was the state. I mean, I, I felt that way, I mean, we were trying, of course, but I, I kind of think we all were feeling that way. But if, again, as a suggestion, if there's anything, hopefully, not again, but if there's anything, that would've been helpful to our students. And I, I hope that from this, that's not the only takeaway you got from that. And, and I'm happy to hear that you stopped into every teacher and I'm happy to hear you kind of checked with them, that, that does make us, that makes us feel good. So thank you, we appreciate that, thank you for that. So that's, that's really it. So again, most of the students are great and so we're very happy for that and we want to thank the four schools that have welcomed our students and our parents and, and it's, it's, it's good, so that's it. So that's it.
Good evening. Thanks, guys, for being here tonight. As we started the year, I just wanted to ask a couple of questions, if I could, concerning, it'll relate to the copies and technology, and I'm speaking really just for Sandberg School in large part here, because I know that our efforts at Sandberg have been really, really concentrated on trying to be, I guess, 21st century-ready and use our streams and so forth. And I'm only speaking because we really, and some of my colleagues are here, we're struggling a lot, in a good way. We're trying to make things work for the future, and we're having a lot of technological issues. I do intend to attend the October 3 tech meeting with as many of my colleagues as I can get to go with me. But a couple of things I'd just like to ask you if you could address before that, so maybe we could, you know, bridge these subjects before that.
Can I just ask?
Sure, absolutely.
What? What did you address? You want me to?
No, actually, I'm just responding to the things I heard tonight, actually.
Well, you think it's best to have you come to the meeting and some...
It's not a complaint. It's not a complaint. I just thought in the opportunity to have you guys before me as we go there, I promise you, it's not a complaint. It's actually a compliment to all the work that the teachers and the students have been doing. I promise you, it's not a complaint.
Did you start off with your issue?
Oh, technological issues, absolutely no issues with you guys at all. I'm sorry? No, we keep, we try and work on all of our issues ourselves. This is not a complaint. It's not an issue that would've gone to yet. I'm actually gonna bring this up, because I plan on going to the meeting, and usually when we try to address it, you know, it goes through levels. And I promise, this is a problem-solving thing to, for the better of the students. I promise you, it's not a complaint about anything you guys have done at all. I promise you. You brought up, we have some amazing technicians that have come, seven out of 15 in the state, that have done great things. I think they're overwhelmed. You brought up Kristen Di Gregorio. When you brought up that name, the woman's done phenomenal things. We are yearning for more good training, so we're hoping that there's some opportunities in the future that we could have better training, not a knock at the training we've had, I promise you. But we love some better training about a couple of things, about how we can maximize not making copies, making things more digital. We've had many meetings in our school about doing as little copying as possible, making students have their materials. I didn't have them have to have their own binder this year. So we're trying to have a little better training, not just for us, because, you know, we're adults, we do as much as we can, but for the kids, too, if there's some way we could work in, even curriculum-wise, some training at a younger age, so by the middle school, that they could get some better training on Teams and Class Notebook and so forth. All right? That's the first thing. Which would tie into the copies. Access. Now, we have a lot of kids, I had a student yesterday who came to me, you know, a very high-risk student, who came to me with a video on his phone showing me the struggles he's having. This is one of the big things I wanted to bring up here at the meeting, was, we have a lot of students that do not have access to computers at home. We do, you guys know our kids in our district, that we're going so heavy into using technology, and we have kids who are coming to us, "I don't have a computer at home, or I don't have the internet at home." And we personally, as teachers, each day trying to teach a class, I don't know, and we don't know exactly how to handle that. Again, not a complaint, I'm just bringing up to the board that, please, if there's any way, we could inquire together to figure out, how do we help students that might lack the resources that they need to become 21st century-prepared? Again, in cooperation in any way, not a complaint, trying to solve a problem, because that is so frustrating. It's a great kid, I mean, you guys know what I'm talking about, with videos, I don't know what to do. The technological help also that we get from Mr. Yanizelli, Mr. Titmus, and so forth in school is great, but quite often, we have students coming to us with issues about how to access the apps on 365 on their home computers. I don't know. And I have 120 students saying, you know, "I can't, I could log on on 365, but I can't get to Teams, and when I open up a document, I can't open it." I don't know how to do that. And we don't even really know the right course on which to send our students to get that. So we're just looking for some type of help as to how we could get our students to help, including, you know, tech, I put tech help for their streams at home and internet access. So whether it's access to computers, is there some way, like other districts that we have, where they could put up some type of security deposit or money to be able to take their streams home? Our students at Sandberg do one-to-one, where they have a stream all day. If there's a way they could ensure it and take them home for, and it could be something where a parent has to agree to it, it could go through, I spoke to guidance in the Child Study Team. We're just trying to help our students do what we're all trying to do, and that's the only reason I came here to speak tonight. I have every intention of being at the tech meeting to take this up. I just thought it'd be an opportunity to maybe get ahead of the boil and start brainstorming a little bit, and I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Just to go back with the tech question, I know a lot of the stuff is going online, especially for the elementary school kids, the taking of tests online, which is great. The problem with that is that now the parents don't get a copy of the test at home, we just get a grade. So it makes it really difficult for us to go over the tests, and if a kid is really struggling in math or ELA, to go over that with the kids. So I know you wanna go paperless, and that's great, but is there a way to make it accessible for the parents to look at the kids' tests online so they can go over it? Do you know what I'm saying? Because a lot of them, like Think Central and everything, a lot of the teachers I know back to school night, they didn't know how to give us access to that. So after the test is graded, we can go back and go through it with the students. So that's something that I've noticed is popping up as far as the technology. So I don't know if there's, if that's a good thing for parent-university, if you could kind of, you know, have something for the parents to teach us about the technology and the 36, Office 365 and everything like that, because I know we have to be part of this, and we wanna be part of this, but a lot of us, this is all new. So if there's a parent-university class, that'd be great, and give us access to the tests after the kids have taken them. So I don't know.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else for agenda items only? Okay, I'm gonna close that portion of the meeting, and we're gonna move on to policy. May I have a motion, please, to move item one?
I'll move it.
Thank you, Ms. Alice Foster. May I have a second, please?
I will second it.
Thank you, Ms. Lent. Any discussion?
Yes, Ms. Calley, the, there were some misgivings about it. Bylaw 0162, I'm intent, this bylaw is simply to enable the board through the administration to be aware if there's going to be a crowd-dating meeting, so that we don't get caught in either the conference room, in the case of an agenda meeting, or here, in the case of a regular meeting, without enough room for everybody who wants to participate to be here. The last thing we want is to hit a fire code limit on a room. These limits are posted by doors, and we are not able to just say, "Don't worry about it." We have to worry about the fire code, and it's beyond our control. So the purpose of the revision is simply to give people a timeline, to give us a heads-up if they expect a large crowd, whether it's a group of concerned parents, a group of concerned employees, or any other group, so that we can facilitate the meeting safer. That is the only change in that, in that bylaw, and it was passed in August.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to curriculum and professional development, may I have a motion, please, to move items one through four?
DeCaro, I'll move it.
Thank you, Mrs. DeCaro. A second, please.
Dunn will second, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Any discussion?
Yeah, one thing, it's not really a big deal, but I think there's an extra letter in number one. Mr. Siderino is A, Dr. Hoker is B, and Dr. Hoker is C also. Just an extra digit.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, roll call, please.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Lent?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Silikowski?
Yes.
DeCaro?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Calley?
Yes.
Resolutions one through four pass.
Okay, moving on to athletics, may I have a motion, please, to move items one and two?
I'll move it. I'll second.
Thank you.
DeCaro, second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Lent?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Silikowski?
Yes.
DeCaro?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Calley?
Yes.
Resolution one and two pass.
Okay, under finance, may I have a motion, please, to move items one through 15?
Dunn will move finance, Madam President, items one through 15.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. May I have a second, please?
Lent will second.
Thank you, Ms. Lent. Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Reed?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Silikowski?
Yes.
DeCaro?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Lent?
Yes.
Calley?
Yes.
Resolutions one through 15 pass.
Thank you. Okay, we have, nothing under non-certificated personnel office, so moving on to non-certificated personnel operational. We do have the addendum, so I need a motion, please, to move item one.
I'll move it.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Silikowski. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Reed?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Silikowski?
Yes.
DeCaro?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Lent?
Yes.
Calley?
Yes.
Resolution one passes.
Thank you. Non-certificated personnel other, may I have a motion, please, to move items one through 11? 11's on your agenda, I'm sorry, your addendum.
Separating one for discussion.
I'm sorry?
I would like to separate number one for discussion.
Okay. I'm sorry, I just didn't hear you. Okay. So...
Dunn will move non-certificated personnel other one through 11, including the addendum, Madam President.
What? Oh, I'm sorry, it's one through 12.
One through 12, then, Madam President.
Thank you. May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Okay, so discussion on number one?
Yes, we have several retirees, noon hour supervisors at the Christ of School. Jenny Ramanti, she had 25 years of service, and Barbara, hopefully I can pronounce this, Baphiradu, Baphiradu, that's French, okay? She has 20...
The roll call is on one through 12. DeCaro?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Lent?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Calley?
Yes.
Resolution is one through 12.
Okay, moving on to certificated personnel, may I have a motion, please, to move items one through 32?
Dunn will move certificated personnel, items one through 32, Madam President.
Separating number 25 and number 31 for discussion and voting purposes.
Okay, I, I'm sorry. Mr. Dunn, you move that? Okay, I need a second, please.
DeCaro, a second.
Thank you, Mrs. DeCaro. Okay, so we'll start with discussion on 25?
Okay, number 25. This wasn't on the sheet when we went over it at the agenda meeting. Okay, the board approved the hiring of the following 11 elementary attendance coordinators for 2019 and '20 school year. Can somebody give me an explanation, basically, what this is? And is the $17,000 for all of them or per person?
The motion was on the agenda for the agenda session. The names were blank. This is paid through Title IV funds. It's grant-funded. It's $17,000 total. The rate is the 4940 per hour, and it's not to exceed the $17,000, which is budgeted for in the grant. The attendance liaison, the coordinators, were put in place last year, and they've had a significant impact on our push towards improving student attendance.
Thank you, you answered my question.
Okay, discussion on 31?
Okay, number 31. Moved, approved the employment of Arthur Freon. I know Arthur very well, I worked with him for about 25 or 30 years. I mean, this is the real deal, to get somebody for $300 a day to observe people. I mean, we're paying our supervisors $600, $700, $800 a day to do the same work. I just wanna commend the administration on this move, and hopefully, we can go a little further by hiring retired people like this to come in and fill in the gap. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, any other discussion on the rest of the items?
I'm voting yes on it. I just wanted to discuss it.
Okay, so I don't need to separate them from the vote?
No, no. Thank you.
All right. Okay, roll call, please.
Okay, roll call on one through 24. Okay, roll call on one through 24. What are we doing, are we doing them all?
S.
Lent?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Singh? Silikowski?
Yes.
Calley?
I am abstaining on item 2A, otherwise, yes.
Resolutions one through 32 pass.
Okay, moving on to non-certificated personnel transportation, may I have a motion, please, to move items one through four?
I'll move it.
Thank you.
Dunn will second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please?
DePrima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Alice Foster?
Yes.
Lent?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Silikowski?
Yes.
DeCaro?
Yes.
Calley?
Yes.
Resolutions one through four pass.
Okay, under supplies, equipment, and services, may I have a motion, please, to move items one and two?
DeCaro will move it.
Sorry, one through three.
DeCaro will move items one through three.
Second, please?
Lent will second.
Thank you, Ms. Lent. Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please?
Dunn?
Yes.
Alice Foster?
Yes.
Lent?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Silikowski?
Yes.
DeCaro?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Calley?
Yes.
Resolutions one through three pass.
Okay, under transportation, may I have a motion, please, to move items one and two?
I'll move it.
Thank you, may I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, roll call?
Calley?
Yes.
Resolutions one and two pass.
Thank you. Okay, under miscellaneous, may I have a motion, please, to move items one and two?
Dunn will move miscellaneous, Madam President, items one through two.
Thank you, may I have a second, please?
DeCaro will second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please?
Lent?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Silikowski?
Yes.
DeCaro?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Alice Foster?
Yes.
Calley?
Yes.
Resolutions one and...
Okay, under board secretary and board business, may I have a motion, please, to move items one and two?
Reed will move items one and two.
Thank you, Mr. Reed, second, please?
Dunn will second.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. I thought I would read the, um... Goals, sorry. For anybody watching at home. The district goals for the 2019-2020 school year, under excellence in education, to continue to enhance innovative educational opportunities for all students in accordance with our strategic plan, under fiscal resilience, continue to evaluate options to improve financial reserves due to significant decrease in state aid, and continue efforts to educate our stakeholders on the district's financial situation due to the significant reduction in state aid. Under whole child, continue initiatives to address student wellness, and continue to engage with community partners in addressing social issues. Those are the district goals. The board goals for the 2019-2020 school year, continue to work toward achieving board certification by continuing to receive professional development with NJSBA programs in the coming year. Continue to support district and community events, and continue to embrace diversity at our board meetings that is reflective of our community. Is there any, any discussion on items one and two? Roll call, please?
Reed?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Silikowski?
Yes.
DeCaro?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Alice Foster?
Yes.
Lent?
Yes.
Calley?
Yes.
Resolutions one and two pass.
At this time, we're going to open the floor to hearing of residents on any school district issue. Ms. Weber?
The sale of Cheesequake School is not on this current agenda, as is the Nike, and I was wondering what is holding that up from being sold.
Well, I, I believe that that is actually part of our executive session discussions tonight, so there's limited...
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, Chris.
Really? I apologize. That is actually part of our executive session discussion tonight, so there is limited amount that we can tell you about that, Mr. Weber. However, when it is ever considered to sell or otherwise dispose of or transition any school property, there is a review process at the county and state levels. As you know, that has not hit the agenda yet to activate that process for the Cheesequake property. There's also some complications with the title to that. So the answer is, that is not on the agenda yet, you're right, and it's something the board is working on.
And the only other question I would ask, has the title issue been cleared up?
At this point, that's an executive session issue, so I cannot, because that's, that falls under attorney-client privilege, but...
See you in October.
Yes.
Mrs. Vaz?
Hi again, everybody. Just a few more things that SEPTA is doing this year. I just have just a couple more things, so I just have to read stuff. SEPTA has had a very busy summer, first and foremost, after our wonderful Rock program. We focused on our new flexible seating initiative. To date, SEPTA has provided 50 standing desks to both middle schools, and we are working with the district administration to supply wobble stools that we have already purchased in Diane's garage as the next wave of our flexible seating initiative. So hopefully, every school, most definitely, every school is going to be touched by our flexible seating initiative. It is really a great thing, teachers are very excited. One of the biggest goals for SEPTA this school year was to increase our presence in the community. After such a successful family fun day in the spring, we are following it up with a tentor treat meet and greet on Saturday, October 19th, at Sandberg Middle School. We're looking to have a safe and secure environment for our students to participate in the Halloween experience. We're also very excited to have other events coming up in the upcoming months. With so much going on for SEPTA going into the school year, we decided to reorganize the SEPTA leadership to ensure there's enough support for all of the amazing initiatives. And unfortunately, Scott had to leave, it's his mother-in-law's birthday, but I know everybody met my board, but we have Diane Michael is my vice president, Scott is my treasurer, and Miss Kim, Mrs. Kim Ventarola is our new secretary, membership chair, and that is our new board for this year and many years to come. So I just wanted to say thank you, and we have the initiative, and also Saturday is the hoops, right? They're also doing a, I do have that here too somewhere, oh, I'm sorry. Old Bridge Hoops Academy is, they have their three-on-three tournament on Saturday at Geig Park, and they have reached out to me about a month ago, and all the donation is going to SEPTA, so it's a fundraiser for SEPTA as well, so that is really great. So we'll be there from 12 to 5 on Saturday, and that money also will go to our flexible seating initiative. Thank you.
Allison, that's this Saturday? Yes, okay. Thank you.
It's this Saturday, oh, sorry. Yeah, it's this Saturday at Geig Park, 12 to 5. And we do have a SEPTA team as well, playing basketball.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, I'm going to close that portion of the meeting. Any old business? New business?
Just under new business, just as I reminded everyone, this Saturday is also Old Bridge Day, and on the 11th, 12th, and 13th of October will be the annual Old Bridge Township Public Schools Family Fall Fest. A reminder that we take the revenue from that and put it right back into the classroom programs. I know that SEPTA used some of the funds last year as well. We were able to put software for the planetariums that would have cost a lot more had we have not used the funds from the Family Fall Fest. We bought HP Streams for the classrooms and recreational safety equipment for our students when they go ice skating. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else under new business?
Yeah, Madam President, one thing, since we're talking dates, October 5th at Lombardi Field is the second annual Jude and Zach Adenice softball tournament. If anybody just wants to come out and support the community, the family, I don't know if you're on teams or not, but you just come out, watch games, support the concession stand, be a nice day. Well, under the circumstances.
Thank you, Mr. DePrima. Anybody else?
Yes, as long as we're talking about events. This year is the 50th anniversary of Jonas Salk and Carl Sandberg Middle School. I know last week Carl Sandberg had a kickoff, and they had a ceremony to start it off, and I know all year they're doing activities, so I think 50 years is, who knew? Who knew it was a pretty awesome achievement? And then also on the 5th, because there's always something going on in Old Bridge that overlaps, it's also the Jonas Salk Middle School 5K Fun Run, and that one is in the morning, and I think the softball's in the afternoon. So there's never want of anything to do on the weekends in Old Bridge.
Thank you, Ms. Alice Foster. Anybody else? Okay. So I need a motion to go into executive session.
Yes, for matters of negotiations, attorney-client privilege, and property issues.
May I have a motion, please?
Dunn will make a motion to go into executive session, as delineated by Mr. Parton.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn, may I have a second, please?
Lent will second.
Thank you, Ms. Lent.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Going into executive session.
We will not be back. Thank you.